Okay.
Yeah, Eric.
All right. All right, good evening. The time being 7:02 on...
Do you come?
No. On February 25th, 2019, a forum of the Plinning Board being present called this meeting to order. Just for anyone in the audience, just to let you know, our agenda item E, which is the North Street Andover Street hearing, we'll open that tonight, but we'll take no public comments either from the petitioner or anyone else. We're just going to continue it. They really weren't prepared for tonight, so we'll just open the hearing and then continue it. So there won't be anything that happens tonight. So if you're here for that, you don't need to hang out because you're not going to miss anything.
I'm going to leave that.
All right?
Steve Young here has a letter.
I don't have it with me. My brother emailed something to, I guess it was Caitlin.
Okay, so you...
He had trouble transmitting it, so he's going to send it.
Well, it'll work out fine. We'll get it beforehand now.
Yeah, there you go.
Before you...
But I just want to let everybody know that so they didn't hang around and listen to other stuff and then wonder why they hung around. So with that, I'll move back to Agenda Item A, which is approval of minutes.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the minutes. Mr. Ryder's not here. For 2:25, 19.
All right, have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Right, because that's today, right. And also, just a note, Mr. Ryder did let us know that he would be missing tonight. He had to come up for his town, so he had to attend there this evening. Agenda Item B2, actually, B1, committee reports. Any committee reports from any of the members for this evening?
Just CPC at the town meeting. We've got enough... They're doing a lot of work down at Livingston Street and on East Street. They're putting all the lights up, okay? They have the money to do it. It's going to be over a half a million dollars, but they're going to fix all the lights on the baseball field and on Livingston Street, all the fields that have lights. The football, you know what they do with the football? All new lights. The poles, they're going to be gone, they're going to put all new lights.
Okay.
But that's going to come up. It made the agenda for the town meeting. It's in, I think it's April.
All right.
The town meeting is in May.
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 All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have one of my... I'm on the Local Housing Partnership Committee. We met last week, I think it was. We discussed in the past, in our last meeting, about town-owned land. Town-owned land that is, that we're looking to develop through, with the Mass Housing Partnership in the state, for affordable housing in town. So we've been given a number of the sites that are land that's in town, some of the sites that have small lots and so forth, but there's a development, or some land, I should say, down on Rebecca Lane in Tewksbury, that we kind of settled on as far as going forward with the warrant article. There's like five or six lots down there, small lots, that we're looking to develop into affordable housing in town. Again, the plan that we've talked about is still conceptual, but we're going forward with the opportunity to maybe develop some of that land into affordable housing down there. So, very good. Also, immediately, we updated everybody on the affordable housing with regard to Tewksbury Habitat Build. The 1047 South Street project is progressing. Charleston Tech is building that property down there, so hopefully be completed at the end of the school year. Also, was discussed the 1660 Main Street project, which is progressing, which is a lot of land on Main Street opposite, next to Heatherwood. That is being developed with the Northeast Veterans Group for the purposes of affordable housing as well. Still conceptual as far as the design, looking at possibly 10 units down there. Unfortunately, in the past few weeks, I'm not sure if I notified everybody here, but John Ratka, who was the leading gentleman up there at the Veterans Group, passed away, unfortunately and unexpectedly. He was the head man at the entire Northeast Veterans Group, so they're looking to replace him and go forward. So, Tewksbury Habitat Build has partnershiped up with veterans for that Main Street project, and it's going forward. We're meeting with them tomorrow to discuss what's happened since and going forward, hopefully with the project, so.
Very good. That's it. All positive developments, excellent. Anything else? Anyone? Nope. Moving on to Agenda Item B, bond release request, Winterberry Lane. As Mr. Cuco gets settled, I'll let anyone who just came in know, again, Agenda Item E, the North Street/Andover Street project will be opened and then continued. It will not be heard this evening, so if that's what you're here for, you don't need to hang out because you won't miss anything. We're not going to take any comments tonight from the petitioner or the audience. It'll just be continued to our next meeting. Thank you.
Gentlemen, state your names for the record, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Dick Cuco from Woodland Design.
Carl Krupi, C.C. and Sons.
We're here to request the bond release on Winterberry Lane. There's a $10,000 bond on the project. There was an email sent back a few weeks ago from the DPW saying that they didn't have the opportunity to witness the stone trench that was put in to see whether or not that was functioning properly. Our assertion is that the entire project is built according to the design plans. The ASBILTS were submitted, and the board voted to endorse going forward to get the street accepted. Unfortunately, they had an incident at town meeting, and the street didn't get accepted. But this was put in last September, so there was plenty of time to review it from last September till now. In addition, this was not anything that was required as part of the original design. This was a goodwill gesture that was done on behalf of the developer after having an onsite meeting with Mr. Montori, Mr. Hardeman, and Mr. Sadwick. So, as you can see from the photos, that there is no erosion migrating off of the site from on the opposite side of that stone trench. So we don't see why the bond can't be released as we move forward to have the street accepted at town meeting in May. The article for acceptance has already been submitted. The ASBILTS plans were previously approved, and again, like I said, this was above and beyond a goodwill gesture that the developers did just to try to come to some compromise.
All right. Mr. Delaney?
I see no problem. I thought it was, I thought it should have been passed at town meeting. So I don't see any problems. They've done all the work, and the three people that were concerned are Mr. Montori, Mr. Sadwick, and Hardeman, and they agreed that the work was done correctly. And I think that the three people that are in the statue, if they want it released, I think we should release it as well.
Okay. Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see no concerns either. Pictures look great. Looks like it's resolved itself, and no problems and no concerns. All set.
Mr. Fowler?
Appreciate the pictures, but I was down there in the rainstorm yesterday, and I saw no water sheet flowing across the street or going in anybody else's yard, so I'm fine with it.
I am as well. Obviously, again, this is a bond release, so, you know, the street acceptance is its own thing. We'll deal with that when it comes up for the hearings for the warrant articles. If anybody has any questions or comments at that time, I'm sure they'll come forward. But otherwise, I'm all set with this. So, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to release the bond.
All right, a motion made. Do we have a motion made in seconds to release the $10,000, right? It was $10,000 bond. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B3, bond release for Balsam Place.
State your names for the record. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, Andy Street, Civil Design Consultants, here to request the release of the bond for the Balsam Place project off of Victor Drive. Work has been completed. The plans, engineering calculations, impervious area, things like that, have been submitted along with the, an AutoCAD file, the ASBILTS, and it's been reviewed and approved by the Engineering Department, and we're here today to request the release.
All right. Mr. Fowler?
I'm all set. There's a letter from, as we all know, just so the public will know, we have a letter from the DPW saying that they have no concerns, so.
Very good. Mr. Fattaya?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Delaney?
All set.
The chair is all set as well. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to release the bond.
What is the amount?
$20,000.
$20,000, okay. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to release the bond of $20,000. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item B4. This is the bond release request for 1768 Main Street. The petitioner has asked that we move this to our next meeting. Obviously, it's not a public hearing, so just move it to the next administrative action section for the next meeting and not address it at this time. Which brings us to Agenda Item C, which is 41 Mill Street, Family Suite Special Permit, to have a motion to waive the public reading.
So moved.
Motion made in second, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. Do we have anyone here for 41 Mill Street? Okay. That would be you, then.
Name's Joseph Collins. I live at 41 Mill Street. Looking to get a permit for the family suite.
Okay. And the family suite would be for...
My mother and my brother.
Very good. All right, start with Mr. Fowler.
Keeping the family together, huh?
Yes, trying to.
That's very nice. That's very nice. I have no concerns with this site, although, Anna, I was on your comments. You stated something about the, you know, the 10,000 square feet, I mean, 1,000 square feet and the two bedrooms. Is that just your brushing out mind with the law, or was there a problem that you saw?
For the calculations that I did, it wasn't clear. It was four feet, so I wanted to get these calculations. For the first and second floor combined.
Yep.
Because it is 700 square feet on the second floor alone, so the first floor...
How much?
700 square feet on the second floor. The first floor...
It's 350.
Was, it says 650 square feet for the first floor.
The 700...
350 downstairs.
I'm sorry. The 700 is on the opposite side. It's not, it's master bedroom for the original, for me. The 350 on the top is the part of the family suite.
That's why I asked the question. So we're, so you're right on the bond?
Yes.
So it's a one-unit family suite with two bedrooms upstairs and a kitchen, living room downstairs, and a bedroom. That's fine. No?
It's only one bedroom upstairs, correct?
Yes, one bedroom upstairs.
Because that would make it a three-bedroom if there was two upstairs.
If the office was...
Right.
One bedroom. You can call the other room a playroom or an office, whatever you'd like. It's just a room.
To be honest with you, some people put an office and make it a bedroom, but just make sure you never put a closet in there.
I will never do that. That would be ridiculous. I already have six, seven bedrooms. I don't need any more. I just...
That's fine. But, Ron is right.
All set. Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set as well.
Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, looking at the application, you had to really take some fine tuning into finding out that you wanted the one bedroom upstairs on the second floor. So that's what you're going to do, one bedroom on the second floor.
Yes.
And the first-floor addition is going to be for this family suite as well.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. You know, I bring this to the board's attention, but I mean, looking at our application that we submit, or we have in circulation, it seems like we should probably try to have it somewhere on here, whether we can identify either one bedroom or two bedroom in the square footage that's looking for on our application, maybe, to make it easier for us looking at the plans. I don't know if that's something we can change in the way, but...
It might be a good idea, Mr. Chairman, but this is what I would say. I leave square feet up to the building inspector, because some of these are so convoluted, not that doesn't make them crazy, but it's not that you can just do lengthways width and multiply it and it's there. Some of them have four, four, five, six walls.
True.
So...
That was my initial review when I looked at the application. I'm like, well, is he having a second-floor bedroom on here? I was like, and I finally realized the square footage upstairs with the first-floor addition is going to equal less than a thousand, which is okay. So it's going to be a two-bedroom suite, all right? With a master suite upstairs for yourself, I guess, right? So, just to try to, you know, we can clarify some of that stuff possibly with the application. I don't know. Other than that, I have no problems keeping the family together. Do you have sewer? Family suite?
Yes, I have town sewer.
It's part of the request, I know that, so. And then, you know, again, the building inspector will be out to be our eyes and ears out there. We'll approve it here, I'm sure, you know, once we get to that vote, and then it's up to him to be the actual authority on the street, so.
All right. All set, Mr. Chairman? All right. I'll give our normal spiel, which is we generally encourage the family suites. When we approve them, that's just our step. Obviously, the rest of it's with the building inspectors. You're going to run the numbers with the building inspector and make sure, you know, your plans and everything are, you know, up to the requirements. We just tell you you can do it, he tells you if you're going to do it.
Aye, a check.
Otherwise, I'm all set, and I'll agree with Mr. Fattaya. I mean, I know some will write it into the year where it says brief description. If they don't, we always meet the plans that they bring with them, which can get a little confusing. You know, in the future, if we get to the point where the films get, you know, looked at again, probably should put something in, we put lines in for that information. Otherwise, I'm all set. This is a public hearing, so open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this matter? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
A motion to close the hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. As to the special, family suite special permit itself?
Make a motion to approve the family suite special permit for 41 Mill Street as proposed.
All right, let's denote the second bedroom. All right, I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Moving on to Agenda Item D, 69 Temple Street, Family Suite Special Permit, to have a motion to waive the public reading. Motion made, have a second? Motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. We have someone here for 69 Temple. Come on down.
Would you state your names for the record? The floor will be yours.
Petra Clement?
What's that?
What was the, what did you say?
Oh, state your names for the record, and then the floor will be yours.
Oh, Petra Clement and...
Krista Richard.
Right. The floor is yours.
Okay. We'd like to get a permit for the family suite. I'll be living in it. I'll be living in it. It'll be for me and my daughter, her husband, and her children will be taking over the house.
All right.
The big house.
We'll let you just know I give... All right. Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see the plans here, and they look nice. It's nice to have the family coming back to live with you. I'm sure it's nice to have them, we have them there. Couple of questions I had is, is the house on sewer right now?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We were one of the first ones to hook up many years ago.
So looking at the plans, you're putting a 16-foot addition on the back of the house, is that correct?
On the back? On the side.
Side?
It's to the left, yeah.
Side over, right?
Yes, one side, yep.
Taking the deck down, is that...
Yes, yep. So they can connect it to the house.
What's that?
That way, it'll be connected to the original house, yeah.
As far as the plans that show a front door, is there going to be a front door on the, on the front of the house?
There is a...
It's a common area entry on the new side.
New side?
Yeah.
Is the door going to be on the front of the house?
Yes. Yep, it's a common entry, so the door will be in front.
It's common, though.
It's common. It goes into a mudroom, and it connects us both, so it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a common area, yeah.
Thought we may be having two of them there. Okay. All right, other than that, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
That was the only question I had with the board.
I'm all set with it.
Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, I am likewise all set. Thank you.
Chair is all set as well. Same thing. We encourage this, as long as you bring it in within the rules where it finds it. That'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the board's pleasure?
Close the hearing.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. As to the family suite special permit?
Make a motion.
All right, motion to approve as submitted. Have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Say what the last one, you know, guys still go deal with the building inspector.
That what we have to do next, or like...
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is my name?
Thank you.
You know, he's a very good package.
Thank you.
Very good package.
Yeah, he's a good architect, yeah.
Very nice. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item E. This is the 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street, 1553 Andover Street, and 1563 Andover Street. Site plan special permit, Community Village, Obalee District. All right, do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
Motion to waive.
I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. And the petitioner has asked that we continue this to the next meeting. We're just opening that for housekeeping. So, do I have a motion to continue this to...
Is everybody going to be here?
No. I will not be here, Mr. Chairman, next meeting.
No, you're right. This one. We have hearings on... All right, so we're going to take a motion to continue this to 7:00 P.M. on March 4th, 2019. That was the motion?
Vinnie's not going to be here.
Oh, it was a question. What was the question?
I asked if everyone was going to be here.
Oh, and you, Vinnie, you said you were going to be here.
I'm not available next weekend.
So we'll trade Mr. Fattaya for, do we know if, for Mr. Ryder, I guess? So...
Our player to be named later.
Yeah. So, if something comes up, I guess we can always talk to the petitioner as well.
Yep.
But obviously, this was at their request, not ours, so they could have come this evening, so. So a motion to continue this till 7:00 P.M. on the 4th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. Moves us on to Agenda Item, sorry, moving on to Agenda Item F, which is 2131 Main Street.
I'm going to do it.
Special permit, site plan special permit, Self Village, Obalee District Special Permit.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, state your names for the record, the floor is yours.
John Feneris, BTGOG.
So before I recap and get going, we have architectural plans that I'd like to submit for the record now, if that's acceptable.
I got it under control.
So, to refresh the board's memory, this is for mixed-use development, 2131 Main Street, tax map 96, law 53. The parcel's split, about three-quarters is in the commercial zone in the front, and the rear is in the R40 zone, about 2.6 acres in size with a wetland system along the right-hand side of the property. Wetland system along the right-hand side of the property there. Since the last hearing, we really haven't made any layout changes. There was minor comments here from the board, and we were on hold really looking for the DPW review letter. We have done some things that we thought were worth, were worth bringing to the table to, tonight, that we'll get into, but just in terms of layout, we have a 2,000-square-foot commercial space towards Main Street here, and then 16 residential townhome units spread out over three buildings, all access from a single curb cut off of Main Street here. Tandem parking stalls for each of the residential units. There's a commercial parking area behind the commercial space with some dedicated guest spots for the residential units and more residential guest parking over there. The units are 21 by 36, and we have landscape plan prepared by landscape architect, and the package was really missing these architecturals, which are submitted now. We had some outstanding issues regarding the Oak Street Way, which passes more or less through the property here, somewhere in that neighborhood there. The applicant's attorney wrote a letter stating that the, essentially, that the Oak Street Way, there was no rights in it, it did not connect anything, had no value to any other property or the town. That was submitted to the town. The town's own council reviewed it and generally concurred with that statement. Had a few comments about some things mentioned in the Catherine Warren's letter, but ultimately concluded that he agreed with that assessment of the Oak Street Way. We also, what else do we do? We reached out to Mass DOT. One of the big questions that came out of last meeting was the idea of a dedicated turn-off, right-hand turn lane coming off of Main Street entering the property. So, our traffic engineer reached out to Mass DOT to discuss that matter. The feedback that DOT gave was that, given the low, the low traffic volumes and the provision of a two-way commercial driveway, that Mass DOT would not require such a turn-off lane here. I mean, we're talking about three to five cars during the peak hours that we make in that right-hand turn. DOT's view, to not put words in their mouth, is that that level of traffic with this wide of an entrance doesn't warrant the installation of a dedicated turn-off lane. So, I believe we got Engineering's comments on Friday. There's still a few remaining outstanding items, most of which are, well, all of which are minor in nature, some notes that will be added to the plans, things like that, but nothing, nothing substantial, in my opinion, that relates to changes in the design. And similarly, we got TEC's letter, and I believe the only outstanding comment there was trying to further the discussion about sidewalks throughout the site to provide access to Main Street. It's our opinion that doing so isn't feasible. There's really no path. You have a wetland system on the right-hand side here that more or less prohibits it. If you were to put sidewalks behind the rear of the buildings, it would be walking through people's yards, essentially, and there's really no path. This is a 24-foot-wide aisle here with parking on either side, so access, as they suggest, isn't necessarily feasible in this particular situation. Outside of that, all other comments from reviewers have been addressed at this time. And we will, we plan on seeing Conservation to work through that final process as well. That hasn't been finalized while we waited for those comment letters. But with that, we certainly take your feedback as well and see what else we can, questions that we can answer.
Mr. Fratalla?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the issue about the fire department's concern, was that on there somewhere to write? Was that resolved?
We've reached out to the fire department. They have the plans. Haven't worked through that with them, no. No, they haven't got back to us yet. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have a turning movement plan that shows the movement works, can get in and out safely, turn around in the back here, turn around back here, but just haven't received that final indication from the fire department that they find that acceptable.
Has the access permit been submitted yet for your site?
It has not. DOT, well, they definitely won't issue it without local approvals from this board and Conservation. Sometimes we move ahead with that process, ahead of that, and get the ball rolling, but we haven't in this case.
So, that's outstanding, correct?
Absolutely, yep.
And the legal briefs between the lawyers, that's all, you said that's all resolved? Is that accurate?
That was my interpretation of the, of the, of the letters. Our attorney wrote, wrote that letter and counsel.
It was a little bit confusing in reading it.
Yeah.
But the ultimate conclusion was.
Right.
He agreed with the important point. There was some side points he didn't agree with.
Right.
The way it was argued, or some of the things that were argued within it.
Okay.
But they weren't hurting it to the real question we were asking. It was just sort of side comments along with it.
Okay.
So, the actual issue, he concurred with the issue.
Yeah. Page one made me pretty nervous, and then we got to the end of page two, and it seemed to button itself up.
Pretty blind, while you're reading through some of those comments.
Yeah.
I'm an attorney, so, good luck, sir. All set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Next time we get a letter from Mr. Zerulas, everybody has to stay at a Holiday Inn Express the night before.
All set.
Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, the question I have is, if you look at the drawing on the left-hand side, the condos are up above, and they're like about five to eight feet higher, or 10 feet higher than this property. And along the side of it, I mean, the water was, you could see, you know, the water was frozen there, so it's a big space. What do you have there if the water gets, are you raising this property at all?
There is.
What do you have there to get rid of the water that's gonna be in that area if it gets up higher?
For me, Mr. Chairman, there is a, well, two things. One, we are filling, yes, just to, based on the groundwater elevations from the test pits, it was necessary to bring some fill in. But we also have a, the grading, there's a swale that basically goes behind the properties here that will direct water either from off-site or on-site around the back of the, of our units and into the, into the wellens over here. Yeah.
But this, is there gonna be like a trench or just there, or is there something to disperse the water?
It's, it'll just, it's sloped in such a way that it should catch it and carry it around the back to the, to the wellens, is the intent of the design.
Because it looked like the water was actually running into where the units are gonna be built.
Sure, yeah, well, the nat-
Why it was hard, you know, it was high enough.
Correct, yeah, I mean, the natural drainage pattern is to this wetland, right? It comes across to the, to the wetland, so we've tried to account for that and, and give it a path to, to not negatively impact these, these units.
Mr. Fowler?
Well, after spending a long time reading the Oak Street, which I've known about for a few years, it was interesting, some people at the beginning, oh, no, didn't matter, didn't matter, it's gone. No, it isn't. In fact, in fact, that was their opinion. It was not there, but it's not true. I think what is, what Mr. Zerulas was, it's almost like he agreed with the letter, but wasn't to the form that he would like, you know, and, and I had a laugh to myself after reading it for an hour and a half, both letters, and I said, I can't believe this. But anyways, I'm satisfied with what we have so far. I know you're waiting for two, two letters?
So, we have, we received DPW's letter on Friday.
Right.
And that has a handful of kind of minor-type comments in there. And we have TEC's letter as well. So I guess it's really the fire department that we have not heard back with in any capacity, yeah.
I know there were two.
Yeah.
They met with us on the IDR.
Right, they did speak at the early IDR, yeah, yeah. But they have not reviewed this latest application, I guess.
Have you addressed the, the Department of Public Works in your, on your plan yet? Was anything changed or talked about?
So, so we've received two letters from them.
Right.
We probably cut the number of comments at least in half, if not two-thirds. I really believe all the comments left are, one was about when we connect to the sewer to add some waterproofing, you know, things like that, adding some notes to the plan, and it was very little design-related information. I might have that letter here. Things, things about locations of handicap parking stalls and-
So, would it be, being the fact that you're coming back for Andover and North Street on the 4th of March, would you like to bring this back 100% for us to approve?
It's, I don't know. They won't give a condition?
Right. I'll just make one note that on the 4th, as was pointed out just now, you'll be picking up Mr. Ryder, but you're losing Mr. Fratalla. So, if you do decide to have a decision on that night, you gotta get four out of four.
As would be tonight.
As would be tonight.
As would be tonight.
We got that five.
Correct, yeah, okay. I think I'd almost like to hear what all the board has to say when, consider that when we think about what the path forward is here, yeah, yeah.
All right, so, as far as, appreciate at least getting us an answer back on touching base with Mass DOT. It seemed like the most likely answer anyways, but, you know, reaching out, at least getting the answer. You know, beyond that, as I recall, the outstanding issues from us, or questions from us, you've addressed those. It leaves you obviously with, you know, dealing with engineering and, you know, those things. I don't know how everybody else feels about, you know, what's still outstanding in terms of, I don't think I've heard you say whether or not you have no problem with any of the comments they've made, or if you're just not sure yet.
Usually we want to make a, you know, a decision with a few things outstanding. It's typically because you've said, we have no problem with any of those.
Right.
And that's usually how it gets left, but once we do that, we're sort of out of it.
Right.
So, you guys have to go round and round with engineering, we're kind of not, you can't do it with us anymore.
Right, right.
So, you know, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if you had time to really go through it, but you'd wanna, you know, make that kind of commitment right now, or, you know, put it off till the next meeting, or whether it's the 18th, you know.
Right.
Or the fire, that was the other one. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think it seems, to me, I think there might still be a, you know, a little bit more than, you know, housekeeping left outstanding. It might make more sense to just, you know.
Yeah.
But that's up to you.
Right. I certainly, I don't, I'm looking at Engineering's letter again now, and there's, I don't have any issues with anything here. I mean, these are, these are fairly straightforward to work through, I would think.
And, I mean, do we anticipate there's gonna be an issue with the fire department on the, you've run all your, your turns?
Yeah, and we, we had, this is, we've changed the number of units, you know, we've switched the commercial space over time, but, but this general layout with the 24-foot-wide driveway coming in with the T at the top has, has been consistent all along, and that was presented at the IDR back when this opened up, and there was no issues raised then. I don't really anticipate any, I don't see why there would be an issue. It can pretty, the fire truck can pretty clearly make its way in and out here.
I mean, in looking at the plans, I mean, there's nothing to me on there that if they have any issue with something that you need to move a little to make a little more room, I don't see what would be on there that we'd have an issue with. It would, obviously, would probably affect some of those island pieces that you have,
if at all, and I have no issue with that, if that's the case.
Did we, did we make, did you make a final decision on Mr. Delaney's request on the, that handicap space?
That, that will be there. So, we didn't, we didn't make any tweaks and resubmit our plans prior to this meeting. It was really, hopefully, hoping to get that engineering letter and then do it in one fell swoop, so, but that came Friday, so we didn't have the chance to kind of roll all that in.
But the intention is to put it?
Correct, yes, yes.
I mean, I don't recall any other outstandings from us. So, I mean, it really leaves it with Engineering, fire, making sure that they're fine with it. I mean, I got the renderings here. Obviously, these are, I believe, I don't wanna speak for everybody else, but these are kind of what, this is what we're looking for, you know, with these kind of things, and we've, we've put that out there before. You know, that we do expect that the renderings, you know, will stay pretty consistent, because I see, you know, you've got these things that you can see from the street side, from the sides, you know, because it's the main street. You need to be able to, you know, have good-looking buildings from all sides that you're gonna see coming right down Main Street, so it's not just about the front, because that's not all you're gonna see. So, beyond, I mean, again, we'll wait till, we'll see if there's any public comments or anything, we can bring it back and see.
Sure, yeah.
All right, so with that, I'll open up to the public. Anyone in the public who have any questions, comments, or concerns on this?
Test, test, all right, perfect. Jay Kelly, 79 Salem Road, Tuxbury. So, I'm, I live right up in that neck of the woods. So, two quick questions. Did I hear no investment in sidewalks at this point on, on facing Main Street?
No, the internal, that was an internal thing.
Okay, so there would be sidewalks on, on, and how about, we talked about Mass DOT saying there's no traffic issues. We have a monstrosity going up in our neck of the woods, we call it South Tuxbury. What's it called? Shugru Properties, I believe it is. So, we have a development going up there. So, on paper, it looks like there's no traffic issues. Based on the numbers, no sweat, go ahead. You know, we, we talked about a turn-in lane, but-
Just for clarification, but DOT's comment is because of what be coming in and out of this site, not what's going on on 38.
I, I get it, but I always say it's a, sometimes we don't look at traffic holistically in this town, that's why we get in trouble. You know, we just look at individual projects, and they add up plus-one, plus-one, and away we go. It's already a nightmare up there. So, I'm just to the planning board, you know, can we get it right with a turn-in lane, whether Mass DOT says it's recommended or not? Can we ever take this stand and say, listen, you know, very well, very well-laid-out architect, but if we have that turn-in lane, at least one portion of the traffic can hit their directional and sneak right in, as opposed to hitting the directional, whether you're pulling out or coming in, you know, here we go again. And by 5:00 in that neck of the woods, it's already a bottleneck, and again, thinking holistically, planning for 38, we have a big project going up there in the next two to three years. So, again, this is plus, you know, another big project, so just want the board to consider it. And I know this isn't the last public hearing, correct, for this particular?
Maybe.
All right, well, I wanted to get those on the records, only for myself, but residents alike, so please consider, again, that turn-in lane. Let's get it right, you know, let's try to get it right if we can without asking Mass DOT for everything, that's all.
Okay, just, again, for clarification, the reason we had the petitioner ask Mass DOT is because we can't make Mass DOT do anything. Mass DOT tells us.
I, I, I get it.
So, that, that was us asking them to ask Mass DOT, was basically saying, we don't think it's warranted. They're the only ones who are gonna let it happen. Like, we can't.
I get it.
We can't force a D cell lane anywhere on 38 unless they say it's okay.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate. Like I said, it would really help, you know, because obviously, if no D cell lane, no traffic lights, correct?
No.
Right, and we all know, left and right, so, I mean, there's gonna be a bottleneck, you know, there's gonna be a bottleneck, and it's, it's an easy "I told you so," and it's too bad we're not planning for this growth in South Tuxbury, and that's it. And I think, I hope there's another public hearing, because I'm quite certain many, many residents wanted to come, and I, and I wanted a voice, just for myself, but through residents, so, thank you.
Anyone else, any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, that'll bring it back to the board.
I'm all set. I got a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Are you proposing three commercial, office spots?
I think that's the intent.
I see three sides.
Yeah, I think there's, that's the intent.
Took a three?
Three, commercial.
Okay. And as far as the landscape plan, did we get that yet?
Correct, yes. Yes, you have. Yep, yeah, that was Wymanir J prepared that. I was with the last submission, I think it's, yeah, at least page four. We modified it as well, so it's been originally submitted and then modified for this layout when we flipped the commercial and the parking lot, yeah.
Thank you very much for the renderings. Project looks very nice. I like some of the detail on the commercial space and so forth, so, but, all set for now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, so, well, again, I'll throw it to you first. The board doesn't have any other questions right now. Obviously, you have some outstanding issues, so it's up to you how you want to proceed, you know, at this point, and then I'll see what the board feels, but it's really up to you first.
I think, I think we feel comfortable moving forward if, if the board does, and I don't see any concerns that we haven't worked through in the past and concern me about this project in particular with any of these, any of the reviewers that we have outstanding.
And with that, if, if it is the intent of the board to, to close it and make a decision, anything you have outstanding with engineering or whatever, you have to deal with them and come to your, because it's gonna be pending you guys coming to a resolution.
Correct.
With them on any of the outstanding issues.
Yeah.
Same thing with fire.
The fire, we sat with the, was it the deputy chief and another, another person, two fire officials? With the old plan, it was much more restrictive.
They're fine with it.
Yeah, and they were.
It's fine as is. If it turns out they have an issue, you're gonna have to address it.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna be contingent on that.
Contingent.
I just, when you have a chance, I got one question.
Go ahead.
Okay, has Conservation made a decision on what's gonna happen here, or are you waiting for Conservation to do it?
So, we were, we were going to go before them, but again, waiting for those letters, so we held off. That, that will be next week, is Conservation. So, that, they have not made a determination.
At this point, we don't know if Conservation's gonna approve the layout.
We don't.
On the side, you know, if you're gonna approve it?
We don't, of course, I don't, I can't commit, but, but there was very minor feedback from them at the, at the first meeting we had. I think all we did to address their concerns were add some, some signage along the 25-foot buffer zone, you know, no dumping, you know, things like that. There was really no changes of any substantiation. Their wetland scientist reviewed it and agreed with how the, how the application was put together, the wetland line, things like that as well.
I have two questions. The Conservation will be doing, when is their meeting? After the 4th?
Their meeting is, I believe it's next Wednesday.
So, that'll be the 6th?
The 6th, yes.
Sunday, Wednesday?
No. No, a week from Wednesday, yeah. I did say next, I'm sorry, yes, it would be after the 4th, correct.
So, that doesn't help. The second thing is, when you get the feedback from the fire department, you will then have to make a modified plan for their travel in your new site, right?
We, we have submitted a turn movement plan for this layout in the latest plan set.
So, the road length hasn't changed, and the road width hasn't changed, correct?
Correct, there's a, we've driven a fire truck through this exact layout and submitted that with the plans, yeah. Yep, yep.
Just the open space, sorry to cut more open.
Yeah, this, yeah, right.
The only question I have is, does the fire department know that you moved the commercial building?
They, they have the latest plans, so.
Because they might have to move the, you might have to move the fire hydrant.
Yeah, we have hydrants. The hydrant here, and there's a hydrant here, yeah. And I believe there's a hydrant, an existing hydrant down along, in there somewhere, I believe.
A hydrant within 100 feet of the, uh, fire department's connection?
There, there certainly will be, yeah. Yeah.
I'm all set. All right. When is the place?
Motion to pull the hearing.
Motion made, second. Motion made, second. All is in favor, signified by saying aye. All is opposed. Motion carries. As to, uh, anyway, it's a good way to... To... It's probably from somewhere. This is accurate? This is from the 25th?
Yeah. It has not changed since the last submission, correct?
This is what I recall.
It was included in the, you know, revised package. It was...
Today, right? Last week's?
It was in the pack. I'm not sure where it belongs exactly.
This is Andover at North. This letter here. This is the other project. Oh, yeah. I've got the wrong name in the heading. It does say 2131 on that letter.
It actually has a typo on it.
Yeah. 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 Sorry about that.
I think Mr. Hardeman.
He did catch that, yes. Did not let me off the hook for, for my letter. We do, so we have a waiver.
They're on the plans?
Yes, they are. The cover sheet, yep. Yep. We have the building height, the building height for three stories instead of two and a half, keeping the 35 feet. Uh, land disturbance permit. And then we have an aisle width from 24 to 22 feet for this back area.
So these are all, we've already gone all through these. So there's nothing additional in your list of waivers than we've already gone through?
No. Three. Yep.
You know, we noted again on your revised plan, correct?
Correct, yes. Yep. Yep. Yeah, it's item 22 on the corner of the cover sheet.
All right. So then, as to the waivers, as submitted on this recent report, and as you've submitted again on the revised plan, what is the board's pleasure?
I almost want to wait, Mr. Chairman, until we get all our eggs in, in the best, in the right basket as far as, um, it's only next week. We're meeting next Monday, correct? I mean, I won't be here for that meeting, but, I mean, we'll have some, some, um, feedback from the fire department and from Mr. Hardeman as far as, as far as any outstanding issues. So, I mean...
Then we, we do have a slight issue in that we just closed the hearing.
Okay.
So I, I guess we needed to make a decision, because closing the hearing, we can't continue it to the next one. So...
Then let's vote.
Okay.
Andrew, if, if you would, could you find out from Mr. Ryder if he is going to be here next Monday? That way, these gentlemen won't have to rush to do something that they won't need to do.
Yeah, I believe he will, but I can follow up on that.
He just, he had something that came up for his town.
Yeah.
That he had called in for, so...
Okay.
All right. So then, am I of the understanding that we want to...
Right. That's right.
Okay. So we're going to...
I'll withdraw the, I'll withdraw the motion.
Send the vote to close. And in that case, then we would have a motion to continue to 7:05 on March 4th.
Right.
So is that what we're going to do?
Yes.
Okay. So have a motion made and seconded. All is in favor, signified by saying aye. All is opposed. Motion carries. So 7:05.
That'll give you enough time. We could like to get everything in.
I would think so, yeah. Hopefully.
And obviously, when you, I'm sorry.
I, I would just like to see the Conservation thing in place, because that thing...
It won't be. They meet two days after we do, so it still won't be.
I mean, that thing is like a lake there. I just wanted to see what the answers would be.
Well, I mean...
The condos sit up...
The only, the only way that that's going to happen would be to continue it again after our Monday meeting. I mean, usually we have Conservation, doesn't always answer before we're done, but, um, you know, maybe we could get some information from their previous meeting to see where they stood. Obviously, they're not going to give us their decision, but if they have any major outstanding issues, they could let us know. That's all right?
Yeah, I can look into that.
Just see if they have anything.
Well, I would, I would think when we resubmit this plan set that has the latest round, that will go to Conservation as well. So they may even be, you know, Ms. Gallo or somebody may be able to weigh in a little bit in that capacity.
And the only other thing, again, it'll be up to you when you come in on the fourth. You're going to have four members. You can see how the hearing goes and you can make your decision again at that time.
Okay.
All right. With that, see you on the fourth.
Thank you.
That brings us to a gender item G, which is 138 Astle Street. What happened to sit in, right? Yeah.
Did I do something wrong? I had a ranch on.
Steve had a... But he, that was a typo.
You remember me? No? Yeah. This?
He tagged up though. He tagged up.
Jim leaves the country when it gets down to...
No, if we, if we make a final decision on this and it's all fully approved, you know, you get to take credit, right?
They don't call me the closer for nothing.
All right. So with the, uh, state names directed, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy Street, Civil Design Consultants.
Mira Alanoli, Civil Design Consultants.
So this, this project has been before this board several times as well. Just by a quick, um, quick summary, it's 138 Astle Street, about 6.3 acres, about 200 feet of frontage on Astle. Uh, the parcel today has one single-family home, and the applicant wants to create four single-family home lots, retaining the existing single-family home and divide, subdividing the property into three lots for three new homes towards the rear. It's town water and sewer. Stormwater is managed, infiltration basin that's located towards the rear of the property in this general area, um, back here. Um, so the, the site and the new homes will be accessed, well, the, all homes will be accessed by a private road that connects to Astle Street, winds back to here into a T-shaped turnaround with driveways coming off, a shared driveway here, and then another driveway here to access that home as well. So there's been quite a bit of back and forth with this board, with the DPW. It, it seemed to be that a lot of the outstanding concerns were really with, you know, engineering department, Mr. Hardeman, and the, uh, the layout and the design of this roadway. So since the last meeting, um, there have been some general tweaks, no real major tweaks to things like utilities and lot layout and things like that. But what we have done is widen the roadway entrance. Coming off of Astle is 24, it was previously 20, 20 feet. Previously 20 feet coming off of Astle Street to, now it's widened to 24 feet, about 80 feet in. So more or less, and I can't read my own labels from here, but more or less there, from 80 feet onto, onto the site from Astle Street has now been widened to 24 feet. In kind of a similar fashion, the, the radii that connect the new private road to Astle are, have been increased. It was previously 20 feet, those are now 25 feet. So the entrance to this, uh, private roadway is, um, essentially compliant with what a subdivision roadway, uh, the requirements and the regulations ask for. The other outstanding comment that just came through, we just received another letter from DPW on Friday, uh, there was a general comment about concerns about the roadway, and the other was about this wall that is located along this property line here. So, uh, there's a stone, um, it's, you know, it's a wall, it's not retain, it's not a retaining wall, I guess, I'll put it that way. It's, it's essentially a pile of stones that, that divides these two properties, more or less along the property line. In order to achieve the site distance, we need, looking east from the proposed roadway down Astle, uh, we need to essentially move some of the stones is, is what needs to happen. It won't impact any structural integrity. There's no, again, nothing, nothing's being retained on either side. So it's really moving stones. The applicant reached out to that homeowner and contacted, contacted her and subsequently got an email, um, well, it was really one sentence. I am fine with you removing stones to attain proper site distance. So no matter who owns this wall, whether it's our client or whether it's the, uh, butter who shares that property line, uh, neither parties have an issue with, with moving the stones as necessary to ensure site distance. And from an engineering spec, uh, engineering perspective, again, uh, there's no real impacts to, to the sites or retaining anything of that nature. We also met with the fire department, fire prevention officer. He has indicated that he is, is, finds the, uh, access and the hydrant locations to be acceptable. Was what the feedback we got from him. And then from a Conservation perspective, that process has been concluded and, um, we've received the order of conditions. The order of conditions has been issued there. So that's where we've taken it since the last meeting. You know, just to kind of sum it up with, this is, uh, the, a private road for, for really four homes. You know, as we're talking about very small amount of traffic, it's, you know, you're talking during peak hours, three, four cars in that whole hour using that entrance one way or the other. So pretty minimal impact. I know Astle's a busy road, but in general, this is a pretty low-impact type of project. We've worked with engineering. We've gotten, I think it was initially 28 comments was where we started. We're down to two. So we've worked pretty extensively with them to try and bring this to as much of a resolution as we can. And in general, we've, uh, you know, we, we've, the previous letter, there was quite a bit of talk about engineering standards. We've, we've done everything we can to adhere to all the applicable standards for such a low-volume roadway. So with that, Mira here worked pretty hard in this design, and, uh, both of us are available for, for questioning.
Well, I'll start off, but, you know, glad you're able to sit in on this hearing, so you can see you're not the only one we're giving a hard time to. Otherwise, Mr. Delaney?
They've been in here enough. They've answered our questions a thousand times, I think. I'm all set with it.
Mr. Fittalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Waivers?
Waivers, yes. We have, we have several waivers, yes. Would you like me to just tell you what the waivers are? Yeah. So we have a...
I think I've seen them. I don't have them.
Yeah.
In the one we have tonight, it's right on the side.
Yep.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, as well. I think, um, uh, when Mr. Handley was here, we did his due diligence as far as getting all the issues resolved with DPW versus the kid, then I think we're good to go. So I'm good.
Thank you.
Can we address the neighbors?
The wall's a lot of issue for me.
Even the guy with the water thing. I think by the absence of, was happy.
If I may, on the, on the waivers, um, should it come to this, waiver one is no longer applicable? That would need to come off of a final plan. That talks about the radii, uh, as it connects to Astle. So we have, we comply with that now. We now have 25 feet.
Mr. Fowler?
Would you like to say go, right?
What's that?
You'd like me to say go?
It's clearly up to you. Flora, is you go?
We've seen this for about six months now, haven't we? About that?
It's, it sounds about right, yeah.
I was actually personally dissatisfied that you had to lose one or two other lots. I thought something could have been done, but I didn't see too many squabbles, so I said, fine. Well, I won't say anything. Everything that has been done to satisfy the different boards and committees in town DPW is, uh, is understandable. When you look at this, it's kind of interesting when you find out that the driveways are almost as long as the street. So that's, you know, although it's going to be common, it's common area, so...
Correct.
Not going to be, uh, be taken care of by the association.
The drivers themselves.
Yeah. Driveways in the road, right?
Those, correct, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
You have to have them come down to plow the driveway, now they can plow the road.
Carry it through, yeah.
So they're, they're all set, so it's not a big confusion.
Right.
The wall issue, that was fine. I, I looked at that and, um, you could actually give it a little knockover and it'll still be there, but that's all right.
Very little effort, yeah. Yeah.
That's fine. So I guess what I'm saying is I'm satisfied with what we have. We're not waiting for anybody. So...
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Okay. And I'm, I'm, the plea that I don't recall either, but I've gotten from both said just a question. I, I don't know where we left it on sidewalks. I know we weren't going to do them because it's a driveway. It doesn't make any sense. But as far as were we requesting a sidewalk fund amount or, I don't really, I don't recall having the disguise, knowing we're going to do them, because it's a driveway. That part I know.
I recall, Mr. Chairman, discussing the sidewalks. Me and Mr. Fowler have a difference of opinion as far as the sidewalks go, um, for the residents and for anybody going for a walk, being on a sidewalk versus being on the street. So, um, I am willing, I guess... You don't recall that, Mr. Fowler?
What?
You don't recall that?
Which site?
The site. The site we're discussing right now, 138 Astle Street. We discussed possibly putting sidewalks on one side. Right? Do you remember that? No? All right, so. You don't remember that either?
No.
You guys got some problems to vote, yes. You're divided.
I remember the discussion. I just, I...
I mean, the waiver is here, but it's for sidewalks.
Correct.
Eliminating completely, so...
Correct. No sidewalks.
I thought that we were going to discuss it, but I don't think we had an actual, an actual resolving of the issue. So, I mean, uh...
Well, the one thing they did to kind of, if I may, to kind of resolve that is, uh, instead of making the road narrower, they widened the road. So there's more asphalt there. Uh, and with, what, did you go from what, 18 or 20 to what, how, what, 22?
24 to 20, is that?
The road is 24 feet for about 80 feet onto the site, and then 20 feet after that.
Which is the last section.
You could pack your car there. When you, when you go for your walk, you can pack your car there.
Okay. All right. So, I guess, floating on my turn here, I guess, but I, I guess, to me, I thought, I thought we left it, that we weren't going to put sidewalks in because it's basically a driveway. The question I was leaving now was, are we, are we going to request a payment into the sidewalk fund or not? Was, was where I, I thought it was.
Make that part of the motion.
Yeah. Okay. So for the... But didn't we... How will we work it out for the one side?
Yeah.
And that'll be the amount.
Didn't we dismiss the sidewalk thing when you did the driveways?
But the question is, if this was really a subdivision, which for all intents and purposes it kind of is, a sidewalk would be put in and in any other subdivision, we'd take the fee for the sidewalk and we're putting in the sidewalk if we felt the sidewalk wasn't necessary. So I feel like that's the case here, so.
Thing is, we've taken a lot away from what they wanted to do originally.
True.
You know?
I don't, I don't believe that the sidewalk fee is onerous.
No.
For the amount, you know, I mean, if, I'll leave it at this. It is, it is a long way, this driveway. I'm not sure that requiring the full length of this for the sidewalk fee is also, would either be, also be reasonable. I mean, maybe that first section.
I would think you'd want to go from the, from Astle Street up to, up into the new street to at least the first driveway on the left. Second driveway in the left.
Ballpark idea.
On the color zone. The people that will be walking in there are the people that own the property. People that are not gonna come off of Astle Street and journey through. It's just the people that are gonna walk on the driveways.
Right, well, again, that's why I think we're not gonna do a drive, we're not gonna do a sidewalk. We're not gonna ask them to do a sidewalk. The real question now is the fee in lieu of doing a sidewalk is the question. How much length of this?
Jim, I have no problem waiving, doing the waiver as far as eliminating the sidewalks, but I think we should be getting something as far as the sidewalk fee, so.
I don't disagree.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out the, a length that makes sense. Do we know what the total length of the road is that's going with the driveway, how we wanna refer it?
Or a sidewalk fee calc or the actual, no, I'm just kidding.
You wanna do the math.
It's 300, it's 387 feet is the length. That takes you to the end of the, end of.
The T?
The end of this end of the T. About 387, yeah. So if you just went all the way straight down.
Feet of sidewalk. It would be ridiculous if we put it in. So I don't know, we split the difference?
I figure 200 feet, to be quite honest with you.
Alright, so it's a little more than half.
That's right. That's how I came up with the driveways.
This is typical with a private road type situation that you, okay.
Okay. Feet and the law.
Alright, so.
What's that?
Feet.
The fee, yeah, yeah.
If someone has an issue with it, you can feel free to come in and ask us in a non-substantial change, I suppose.
Sure.
But we're gonna leave it at 200 feet?
200.
I feel good?
Yeah, it's great. I agree, yup.
One side?
One side.
Alright. Excellent. So otherwise, beyond that, I didn't have any other questions. I think, you know, we've kind of gone round and round. It's not, you know, it's not the prettiest in terms of with the twists and turns, but it's what works. And considering where we started from in what was requested, what we've sort of whittled it down to, you know, with, you know, where we ended up in terms of the number of lots, I think it works. I don't think it's gonna cause anyone any issue. Again, on the rock wall thing, I'll just say, you know, provided it is decorative and, you know, and it's just a matter of moving the stones, that's fine. If it turns out that it is doing something, you're gonna have to account for that, so I want to make sure that makes it in there. That if it turns out that it's, you know, moving those stones does have some sort of an adverse issue, it's gonna have to be addressed to reinforce anything that happens as a result. But if it's decorative, fine, you know, the sightline's more important.
Right.
So that's fine.
Can we just give them a caveat here? If, when you're doing the construction, whoever puts the road in, if they decide that they would rather put that 200 feet of sidewalk in and not give the money, but to make it maybe look better, better road, safer, with the two swing, I don't know what you call them, but with the two curves on the road, it gets the people off the sidewalk, off the street.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, again, nothing stops you.
Right.
It's just we're giving the waiver that allows you to not, so.
When they decide who's gonna build us, let them know that.
Well, absolutely, yeah. And if I may, with the engineering, so there's still comments from the, and we just talked about this with 2131 where it was, if it was conditionally approved, we would work through it. I just, you know, we've worked pretty extensively with them. I just don't want that, I'm not quite sure how that gets handled, but I just, you know, I'm not sure if we can reach an agreement between us and the engineering department on this one, I think. There's some, they said there's still some concerns, is what they said. Yeah, that was the last letter, was that there's still some concerns about the roadway, so.
Right, but at this point, I think we're making the decision.
That's fine, yeah.
As far as I see it, we're making the decision that we're okay with the road.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding of that.
And I think, again, we did kind of go back to, you know, to make sure, we asked the question of, you know, is this, you know, a major issue or just a noted issue?
Right.
Because, again, I think treating it, they're looking at it as more than a driveway.
Right.
Whereas we're treating it as pretty much as a driveway.
Right, right.
So I think that's where we left that.
Okay, yeah.
If that's the only outstanding issue, then I believe we're addressing that, yeah.
Okay, great.
At the last meeting, it was brought up by one of the residents about putting a four-foot chain link fence around the detention pond. At the time, Jim said he was gonna talk to the client. Do you know if that was resolved? Yes, no?
At the moment, it's not proposed.
Yeah, okay.
But it, you know, yeah.
Is there any reason why that would be a major problem?
The notion of putting up a fence is a problem. I don't, just don't know if there's a value or the reason, you know, it's a, how deep is this?
Recall, what was the reason? I remember being asked what.
Three feet, it's a three.
Steven, you've seen this. In some cases.
A three-foot deep depression.
It swaps the so bad, so bad, you'd wanna have a chain link fence.
Sure.
But if you wanna just delineate where the side of the basin is.
Right.
With a post and rail fence, that's, that's the other thing, not to say to take it out of whatever the person did, said to a week ago, whenever they talked about this. But that's the two changes. I mean, chain link is not as pretty. Post and rail fence, again, it delineates where the fence is and it's up to the parents to say, don't go beyond that fence.
The request was for the top of the basin, is that?
Yeah.
Is that, that poses maintenance challenges too to mow it and make sure it's functioning properly with the berm on top.
Is there a detention basin down, down at the bottom?
The basin is located more or less here.
And that's the one that butts up to Sesame Street?
That is, that's our, that's the only detention basin, yeah.
That was the question that came up at the last hearing.
Sure.
So why don't we leave it at this, then? Why don't we, we can make that an issue that if it, you know, as, when this thing gets built out, it may be something we have to revisit, at which point we may require it.
Okay.
Or some sort of fencing and treat it almost like a condition to be looked at later, like landscaping. And we'll just, you know, hold off on, rather than making it mandatory at this point, we'll look and see how it turns out and if it turns out that something needs to go in there, we'll revisit it at that point. Does that feel acceptable to everyone?
That's good, that's no problem, yup.
Alright, otherwise, I think we're all set. So I'll open it up to the audience, seeing that no one is in the audience. I'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Both the public carrying.
Motion to close the public, public carrying. It's a second. Motion made and seconded. All's in favor?
Aye.
Signify by, I'm sorry, aye, all those opposed, motion carries. As to the waivers as requested on the plan, noting, of course, that the waiver number one is no longer necessary and the revised plans will reflect waiver number one no longer needing to be there as well. What is the, will the board on the waivers?
I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the waivers number two through six with the caveat of the allowance for 200 feet of sidewalk fee.
On one side, right?
On one side.
Okay, perfect. Does that work for everyone? Alright.
On the left side.
Alright. Alright, motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. As to the open space residential design special permit and defensive subdivision in itself, what is the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
So moved. Alright, so we are approving that with the caveat on the stone wall for if it turns out that anything needs to be done to shore that up afterwards. The detention basin.
Fence.
Fencing to be an issue that the board will review at a later date.
Yep.
After the construction is completed or ongoing, whatever the drawwork makes the most sense. Do we have anything else?
And waivers two to six.
And we got those, right. Was there anything else outstanding on those? That's it, right? Alright, alright. And then noting that the board is, you know, is approving the design of the roadway. And will be submitted on the final revised plan.
And no.
And there is no, because they fell below the line. Alright, so with that, we have a motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All's signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Is that, you can take credit now?
Two for three. It's in August.
It's been a while.
August.
It's going since August.
Alright, that brings us to all business. Any all business anyone wishes to discuss at this time? Mr. Fowler? New business, any new business anyone wishes to discuss at this time?
We have a letter from Anna.
Yeah, we lost, we lost an item on here because we've had director's report used to be listed on here. Can we put director's report back with me? Because that's your, that's where you, you give us, what you give us? It used to be on our agenda as an item, but it fell off somewhere a little bit. Yeah, the correspondence to me is like if anybody sends anything into us, you know, external, right? So let's put, let's put that back on so that that covers the section where you send us in the updates that you have. So that's what we'll do here under correspondence for now.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, yeah, whatever title, like that, yes. Alright, so you have two on here.
Just one.
Oh, I'm sorry, just one.
That was just an update.
Two pages.
That's the hotel, correct?
Yep, so that's just, I just wanted to provide an update, but that's it.
There was no other feedback, right, as far as how it went or anything, or?
Nope, that's all I was given, provided information, so.
Alright, well, we will wait our 75 to 90 days to somebody next day, just. That's alright.
I'm kept in the dark, I guess, so.
Congratulations, Vinny.
Well, hopefully it, it's resolved and just doesn't drag out any further, but we'll see. That's it for the correspondence. Nobody has anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright. Motion made and seconded. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Thank you, good evening.
Let's make this high.